It's in effect from July nineteenth to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And the amount it's for is three hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars. It's the main, it covers everything, the tobacco and the wick and all that stuff.
Yeah, like color chronic disease.
Yep, it's the main one.
I would move to accept the grant.
Yeah, we second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. And that brings us to ARPA comments. And I think we're still gonna stick with the same plan when we hear from the mayors and the districts. Now we'll call a special meeting. And we'll all sit down together and we'll hammer it out and figure out who gets what. We'll all leave happy. Right, Ross?
You betcha.
You have any comments, Ross?
Uh, the only thing I sent you guys was the, uh, the meetings are coming up next week. Get somebody to monitor those, those will be some getting into this. Discussion about what they're gonna recommend to the committees from the agencies. And then from there they'll go, you know, have another session with the, uh, committee. And then they'll recommend it to the governor and see how that, so, not quite to the first step yet. They're still evaluating, or what I heard.
So I guess we'll have to wait for guidance from you and the mayors. And when they need to have the meeting, we'll have the meeting.
Yeah, we won't know anything until another few steps. I suspect that they'll, they are in fact probably calling the different applications up. Yeah, to straighten a few things out, I know there's a lot of missing, you know, mistakes and confusion in some of those applications. So I'm sure it's gonna take them a while.
Okay, well, thank you for keeping us in the loop.
Yeah.
Like I said, when, when the need arises, we'll just call a special meeting now. We'll get you here and we'll go through it all. Anything else, Ross?
No, I just, uh, to let you know that the power is put in from both a sewer app and a water app to try to see if we can relieve the pressure on, on the local districts. So, uh, they're pretty extensive. We don't know exactly how it's all gonna pan out. I mean, uh, we didn't hold back on anything from what we see in the future. So just like you say, the one-time chance and, uh, so we're, we're kinda on the edge of criticality on both counts. We've got sewer problems and water problems, so.
Seems like now would be the time to get them done.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Come on in. Don't be shy.
About where we're at, we're.
Unless you're having symptoms. Smoke symptoms, okay. Delta, not okay. So we're just doing our ARPA comments.
ARPA comments. Well, Russ probably updated you on power.
I didn't throw any numbers out on it, scare them to death. So, uh, I'm just going with about this report that came out last week.
Yeah, I'll print that off on my computer and we'll go from there.
Whatever you can, and whatever, if anybody needs help with them. I wrote like six of them for the competitive grant process. So very well-versed in ARPA now.
Anything else on the ARPA?
Are you familiar with, we just got an email from a group out of Great Falls. They're looking at broadband for cities and whatever.
The one, the meeting Jolena's put together?
Yes.
I have no idea what it's all about. I got the invite too.
I mean, we're not necessarily, the only one would be Dutton because they're not on Three Rivers. The rest of them, they're all covered.
You're all covered. Well, and that's, um, I will attend that meeting to find out exactly what they're talking about because it's all the way down to Lewistown. So I don't know if they're looking at gaps or what. ARPA monies can be used for broadband. That committee's been meeting, but, or it hasn't met yet because they haven't quite figured out what can be done and not, and I know they're still waiting on a lot of rules, um, from Treasury on a lot of it. CDB, CDBG, CBB came out and funding for your building may qualify for EMS.
We're hoping. The only reason I was asking on the broadband is there wasn't a lot of information in that email.
Nothing in the email. And I asked her for more and she's like, we'll describe it all at the meeting. Okay. It'd be nice because I've gotten a few questions and I'm, I don't know, I don't know who their developer is. Um, where they're from or anything. I was, I tried to get ahold of Jolena and I didn't get her. Um, and I didn't leave a voicemail. I didn't wanna play phone tag. So I will try to follow up and see if she'll be more willing now that she's had some RSVPs to give a little more information. I think she was kind of checking first, maybe. I don't know. But.
Yeah, we, I, I mean, I didn't respond to it. I don't think any of us did. We just, uh, tried to.
Well, and I can explain that too when I go to a meeting that, you know, there are quite a few areas that are covered already with Three Rivers, Northern Telephone up North, some like that too, so.
Okay, anything else on ARPA?
EDA has some funding too that may work for your, not specifically ARPA. It is ARPA, but it's EDA ARPA. Um, we're watching the webinars and things. There may be some funding there for your building too.
And what was the other one you said earlier?
EDA?
Yep, CDBG, CBB. I know, I know, I know.
Sounds like some oil you should.
I know, doesn't it? CB joints. And they're, they took all of their money. They didn't put any into economic development, which was sad because we could've done some really great things. On a side note, with the housing discussions that have been going on too, there may be a way to apply for funding to help low to moderate income people get their houses rehabbed and things. And then when they go to sell, if they sell to someone that's not low to moderate, they would pay those funds back. And if they sold to somebody, then it would be a grant. So it may help with some of the rehabbing, um, in some of our rural areas because a lot of those, a lot of people are kinda on the edge with that. So we're looking at that.
Work with Opportunity Inc. or?
Will do it because it'll be a grant slash loan fund. Kind of something similar to what Shelby did with their businesses. But when someone leaves their home then, for whatever reason, if they sell to someone that's low to moderate income, then it just ends up being a grant. But if they just sell to someone that's not, they pay the money back. So it's all contingent on the sale of the property. And we have the loan stuff set up. And I've done some inquiring with HUD. So we may be able to do that to help out with some of the housing crisis in the whole region, hopefully. And then we're looking at asking, and this would work for Kappa and for, um, not necessarily Kappa, they don't have a revolving loan fund, but for the city with economic development, the Montana Economic Developers Association is asking for forty million dollars of the business stabilization funds, for revolving loan funds, for those entities that have monies to do gap financing stuff and things, um, that we already do, but everyone's having money. So, um, there's actually quite a few businesses in Teton County we'd be able to open partnership with banks. So we're looking at that, but it's not gonna be discussed until their September meeting now. So let's hurry up and wait. But they're also waiting on information from Treasury, whether they can grant it to nonprofits and then be loans and all that kind of stuff. Kurt Almey's being very cautious with all of this because nobody wants to get, um, stuck.
Stuck with the bill, I can understand that.
And I was in another county yesterday and they're like, well, if something happens, at least it's white collar crime. And I know we're all live, but it was, it was, the joke of the day is, at least it'd be white collar. I'm like, are you kidding, guys? But they're, no, they're all being very, very cautious with everything because counties don't need to be so.
We don't need the counties to contact us and they're waiting to see what everybody else is doing, which is what we're doing, so.
Great Falls has a, or Cascade County has a tremendous amount of money. Um, and we wrote the grants for them. I say we, it was their engineer and myself and my multiple personalities. But, um, we wrote all their grants and the day they were submitted, the county met. We just thought we were gonna talk about, you know, what their asks were. No, they allocated funds that day so they'd be more competitive because they have the money and they have vetted, you know, water sewer projects, typical normal. But they had balanced theirs out so that there are other projects that are gonna come in later. But that's all they were allocating for now until they figured out their lost revenues and everything. And it's all still kind of a guessing game on a lot of levels. So the cautiousness is very much important. And it will be interesting to see what the Infrastructure Committee says later this month with, on the twenty, or, yeah, on the twenty-six with all the projects that came in. They had two hundred and some projects that came in with just the first round.
That doesn't surprise me because with the money sitting there, this is the time to do it. Any further ARPA comments? Okay, Commission reports.
I don't have anything.
Uh, just be careful with fire.
Yeah, we met with the LAPC meeting on Tuesday.
Yep.
The long-term weather forecasts are not very nice.
Not favorable.
I actually offered the Weather Service guy a little cash under the table to change it and he wouldn't buy it, so. Okay, public comment. Mike?
Yeah, thanks, thanks for letting us speak before you and I won't take too much time. I have three things I wanna bring out to you. The first thing is what a slice of paradise Teton County is. We're transplants from Eastern Washington. We were farmers and ranchers over there. My son lives in Cascade. He's a rancher. And we wanted to move closer to him and the grandkids. And so we're happy to be in Teton County. And it's nice to come into a courthouse and not have to go through a metal detector. I'll tell you, where we came from, things are changing and, um, the fact that our son's here is just one reason we moved here. There's, I guess, the political climate and whatnot in Washington is changing rapidly. And it may even have an effect eventually on your county. So, uh, that's the first thing. Also, I'd just like to say that the diversity of your resource agricultural lands and the, especially the irrigation project here is beyond belief in my mind. The engineering that went into those canals and ditches and so forth are just, um, mind-boggling that those things were able to take place. And that was, what, in the forties? And a lot of that was built way before that.
Way before that, yeah. Most of it was steam shovels.
Wow. To me, it's a, a modern miracle that happened when it wasn't so modern. So, yeah. Anyway, that's my first statement. The second statement, I'd like you to know a little bit about me. And then I'll get to my third thing. But like I say, we're, my wife and I are farmers and ranchers in Eastern Washington. We started farming and it's all dry land there, uh, back in nineteen eighty-four. And, uh, then got into cattle and so we're ranchers too. Mostly it was dry land grain and hay and then the cattle. And I still own the core of my cattle herd, which I would love to try to bring over here eventually, but I need a little more land and hay ground, but I don't know if that's gonna happen. Anyway, um, so that's kind of our background. Something else I'll tell you about myself, I was also a public school teacher for over twenty-two years. So I've been around that block a few times. And something else I would tell you is that also in Spokane County, and we were from that little town of Cheney, which is about eighteen miles southwest of Spokane. It's the home of Eastern Washington University and that's where I got my degree and so forth. And I taught in Cheney High School there for that twenty-two years. But the other thing about Spokane County is I was appointed to the Spokane County Planning Commission and I served two terms on it. And talk about an education. I got a real education being on there. I was the only farmer rancher member of that commission, a seven-member commission. And the rest of the folks on that commission were real estate people, developers, people associated with the buildings, trades and those kinds of things. So, uh, my main focus was to see that agricultural lands were preserved and, and not used for development and houses. And I was most of the time, uh, the black sheep of the commission and kind of voted down on a lot of stuff. And so from where, where we're from, a lot of the lands, pasture ground especially, is being broken up into smaller and smaller segments. And cattle ranching, pastures disappearing. And, and that's a national trend too. I mean, there's a lot of people that don't like cattle. They don't think cattle are good for the environment. They wanna get rid of it. You can buy laboratory meat in a store and forget these cows. So, um, that's a, that's a big push, uh, in certain places. And in Washington, it, uh, it broke my heart to see farm ground and, uh, pasture ground used for development and that was the main push. So, um, I guess I'd describe myself as an ultra-conservative and my main focus is to, you know, preserve farm ground, preserve pasture and farming and that way of life, so. So, uh, that brings me to my last point. There's a project, I think, in eastern part of Teton County, a distillery that supposedly is coming in. And that concerns me a little bit. I watched a news snippet on that and the gentleman who's owning the company that wants to build a facility there was talking about it, that the facility would be a destination spot. And that really concerns me because if that's what I think it means, where you're wanting to bring people in for various, whether it be liquor tasting parties, or you mentioned bonfires and having those kinds of things. I saw that happen a lot in Spokane County where, uh, those kinds of things were brought into, or adjacent to agricultural lands and that caused a big conflict. And I worry on that kind of thing where he wants to be a destination spot. You know, is it gonna turn into, you know, social events like weddings or receptions or, you know, liquor drinking parties and that type of thing? And so I wanted to ask you about that. And I have several concerns in regard to that, including the traffic that it might generate. We live on County Line Road, which is a gravel, narrow, washboardy, dusty country road that has plenty of local traffic on it already. And, you know, you've got farm equipment, you've got horseback riders, hay trucks, tractors and balers and all kinds of other things up and down that road constantly, so. The other thing is the water. If it's a distillery, it's gonna use a certain amount of water. And I'm not sure in Spokane County, that was, uh, something that people were concerned about. And, um, and over there, you could drill a well and, and hit really good water. And over here, I know that's not always the case. So that's a thing. Fire, uh, you know, is there adequate fire protection for such a facility? Late night noise is another thing that could affect the neighborhood. I just think that, uh, and again, I'm not familiar with your zoning. Or if you have zoning areas in Spokane County, there were about six different zones. And if a business like this wanted to come into an agricultural zone, it required a zone change or a zone variance. And, uh, that's where the Planning Commission came in to determine whether those kinds of things could be allowed according to the comprehensive plan that was developed to kind of regulate the zoning. And so to me, that type of business is not really conducive or compatible with the agricultural, uh, use of the land. And so that's my concern and I wouldn't even think about this hardly if I hadn't have been on that Planning Commission. That's really what educated me and, and, good or bad. So anyway, I didn't know if you could answer any questions about that or if you've thought about some of those things in regard to, um, allowing that facility to be built.
We can't answer those questions. The question of zoning in the county was brought up about ten years ago. And we held meetings around the county and the public was just unanimous of being against any zoning in Teton County. So we have no zoning. So it's completely up to the private property owner. The water would be a DNRC issue. The state regulates that. And we, there's a subdivision out in that area and we've already had complaints about traffic. But again, with no zoning, there's, there's really nothing that we have any authority to do about any of that. For good or bad, I guess. Fire protection would be with the local volunteer fire departments.
Where, where would that nearest department be?
I'd have to look at the, it would be right between Fairfield and Power. I would assume Power, that far east.
Power, Vaughn, Vaughn may come up the road.
Power would be closer, I think, possibly.
They're planning on putting suppression.
In the building?
I can talk to a few of those, if you don't mind, Mr. Inspector. We're working with the individual that is looking to build. It's on his uncle's property. There's a hundred and forty acres there. His uncle is kind of gonna oversee security and things like that. There will be a tasting room there, but it will be mostly a distillery. Um, the tasting room, um, will, there are only two drinks allowed per individual. They're not looking to get any big liquor licenses or anything like that. They will serve minimal food, so they'll still be closed by ten. People will be able to rent the facility out. They are looking to put, um, some camping spots and have some outdoor recreation and that type of thing there. It is in the very beginning planning stages. They have the most basic drawing completed and they are working on the rest of it now. He was just up here last week and they'll be back, they're up every couple of weeks. And if you would like to ask these questions, um, I can connect you. They're very open and I think once they get everything kind of solidified with their plans and some of the financing stuff, um, that financing information that they're looking at, they're going to have some public meetings and have some discussions. They want to, um, Joel really wants to be involved with the community. He spent all of his summers here growing up and, um, he plans on moving here from California. He said he's downsizing. He's almost an empty master and that was some of his plans. So I can get you in touch with him so you can ask those questions or with the architect that's working on it, um, to kind of explain where you're coming from with all of that. I don't know, they've talked to Paul a few times. I don't know if the road information and that has been addressed yet, but they've talked about it.
Paul was our planner. They have that with him, so.
And I know that Tim was going to keep in touch with him, um, the architect from Great Falls. So they wanna make this smooth and not something that anyone would have any qualms about. They're very open and willing to answer any questions and anything of that sort.
That eases my concerns a little bit and I appreciate that information. I would just say, and I'm, I'm not trying to, uh, tell you guys what to do or anything, but because of what's happening in this country, just generally, in especially these big cities like Portland and Seattle and in Washington especially, just recently, they passed legislation that basically, you've heard about defunding the police. And I just got a message from one of our former state senators in Washington that said that it just took effect here last week, a whole handful of laws that tend to weaken the police authority. And I think you're gonna find more and more people fleeing some of these areas and coming to Montana and Idaho and other areas. And I think you're gonna be faced with more and more of these projects like this. And, uh, really, if you, if you want to protect your resource lands, I don't know of another way to do it other than having zones where you can have some control and steer your development and, and have a, you know, a say in it. And I know people, I'm not sure, well, most of the neighbors down there at the end don't have a clue what's going on here with this project, haven't even heard of it. And so, um, I, I just think that, um, from what I saw in Spokane County, that's the only way you can control what happens in your county is to get some system in place where you can regulate and steer that development. And it's a fine line, you know? There's people that wanna come in. You can't deny them the right to come and move here. But you also have to protect the people that are already here. And that was the fine line in Spokane County. I'll give you one quick example. I saw many cases where retired people moved to Spokane County. They spent their life savings to buy property or build a house in an agriculturally zoned land, uh, area. And come to find out that the county commissioners wanted to change the zoning to, from, for example, large tract ag to small tract ag, which would allow things like gravel pit operations to come in next door. Or here's a real kicker, and I hope you don't have to deal with this. And that's a marijuana grow operation next door to these retired folks. And if you know anything about marijuana growing and processing, it basically stinks like a skunk. It's a constant smell from those, uh, facilities. And so that made their property worthless. They couldn't sell it because nobody wanted to move in next to that smell. And so they were stuck there. They couldn't sell their land, maybe a penny's on the dollar, maybe. But, so to me, uh, the county government just, uh, did these constituents disservice by the way they allowed those changes to take place. So anyway, that, uh, that's something I saw that really bothered me. But, so anyway, um, if you don't have zones, I would encourage you to try to do something that would eventually, you know, allow you to, to control more of what happens.
Well, you told us that you're ultra-conservative. I think you'll fit in fine here because when we had those hearings about zoning, there was, normally now we get probably ten people to come to a hearing and there was over a hundred people at the courtroom upstairs. And they were very loud and they, very eloquently, and they told us they had absolutely no urge to have the county have any kind of zoning of any type. The only, only hiccup afterwards, we did have a Canadian company come in and they were gonna hire, they were gonna build modules for the sand pits up in Alberta. And they were gonna, they were gonna hire fifteen hundred jobs, which would have been a huge change for Teton County. Some of the people that were living by the proposed area were some of the most vocal against zoning and they did change their attitude against zoning. It was just two or three people. So there's, there's, I, I don't believe there's any willingness from the public to allow zoning in Teton County.
Well, at least you're listening to the public and that, that to me is paramount. Because that's why you were elected and.
Absolutely.
But, uh, again, you know, we need to think about this influx of people and it's probably not gonna happen overnight, but I think you're gonna see more and more of it. It'd be my guess. Talking to the Realtor in, uh, Great Falls, he says, I'm doing business with people from New York. Um, talking to the Realtor in, um, Great Falls, he says, I'm doing business with people from New York, California. I mean, there's people buying property sight unseen to move here. And so.
And, you know, and gradually over the years, we've seen a lot of this change. Even on the bench or the irrigation project with all the corners of the pivots. They've been sold and houses built. Agriculture is still the main stay.
Right. Well, anyway, I, I applaud you for serving and being in this position. And it probably isn't going to get easier in the future. It'll probably.
Right.
But anyway, uh, so that's my two cents worth today. And, and thank you for listening to me.
You bet.
I appreciate you.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming. Because if we don't hear from people, we don't know what's going on out there. So, we appreciate you coming.
One deal, a comment on the water you were talking about. The, um, when they came and presented their proposal to us. They have a way of recycling that water and reusing it. So, instead of just dumping it. So, I mean, that's a good thing. So.
Well, there, as far as I know, in the area, what I've seen and heard, that a lot of the wells that have been drilled. Don't have really good palatable water. And, and that's if you can hit water.
That's right, yeah.
And I see a lot of, we comment all the time at the number of rigs in Great Falls, so tanks in the back on trailers or in the back pickups. People hauling water every week. And.
Well, in, in that, I mean, as things evolve, there's been more pivots put on the bench. Where before it was flood.
Yeah.
So, water issues for wells can become a problem later on.
Well, like, like I said, I'm totally amazed on this irrigation thing. It just, uh, it's not something I've been real familiar with. Just we're from dry land area. But just the, the system of canals and you wonder how that water flows in one direction.
Downhill.
Yeah, downhill. You'd think it would, yeah, the grade, to get the grade right and all those things is absolutely amazing.
It is amazing. Yeah.
So, anyway, that's my deal. Thank you for letting.
Appreciate you coming in.
Appreciate you coming in.
Any further public comment? Public notices, next meeting August nineteenth? Well, I guess the next meeting will be August tenth for the union negotiation. The next regular meeting will be August nineteenth.
What time is the meeting on the tenth? Is it?
One, one o'clock. Yep. Okay, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thanks, Mike.
You bet. Thank you.
Thanks for letting us speak here.